All right, I am going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Santa Barbara School District's Board of Education for June 24, 2014, to order. We'll start by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Cash?
Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Muy buenas tardes. Si alguien desea escuchar la interpretación de esta junta, tenemos los aparatos disponibles ahí por esas dos puertas dobles. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you, and we also have headsets available for the hearing impaired. If you need those, you can ask staff at the side of the room here. Next up on our agenda is Item C5, Introductions, Proclamations, Presentations, or Recognizations. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'll go right into the superintendent's report if that's okay.
That is fine.
We just published in our e-news the June 2014 graduates from our district's three high schools, with Santa Barbara High School leading the way with 42 percent of the senior class attending a four-year school and 44 percent attending a city college. Dos Pueblos had 37 percent of the senior class going on to a four-year school and 59 percent attending a city college. San Marcos had 30 percent of the senior class going to a four-year school with 62 percent attending a city college. And as board members will note, that means that over 85 percent of our high school graduates are on to either a two- or four-year university. Two very exciting events will take place this summer. I hope you got the email. If you didn't, you're getting one soon. And that is on July 7 at 10:00 a.m., we're going to hold a groundbreaking ceremony at Washington School. It will signify the beginning of work for a new school library. And then on August 7 at 10:00 a.m., we'll hold a second groundbreaking, and this time it'll be at Adams Elementary School. And libraries, again, for their library. And I want to conclude by stating that it's very clear libraries are the heart of our schools. And both Adams and Washington will have facilities that will help ensure that students have access to content and are able to communicate their understanding of that content for years to come. So that'll be an exciting day, and we look forward to watching those construction projects throughout the remainder of the year. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, and we'll see if we can get members of the Washington and Adams community from 1998 to come back to see those groundbreakings, since that's how long those communities have been waiting. At this point, we're going to move on to board comments and correspondence. Board members? Mr. Heron?
Just one thing. I had the pleasure of going to the United Way's kickoff for their Sun 'n' the Fun program, and they were recognizing all the young people who are going to be in that program for the rest of the summer. They also announced that next year they will expand it to the West Side, so it'll be fun and sun in the West Side. But Victor Rios was sort of the speaker for the day, and he talked about the value of early childhood education, at-risk kids. He went quite adept on his background and history, which I had heard before, but it was still good to hear it. But Sunday in the Santa Barbara news press, in case some of you may not be reading that, he had an article, a very lengthy article, on the support for summer programs for low-income youth. And basically, his message was, "All students lose academic skills during the summer. However, research has established that low-income students are disproportionately at risk losing academic skills. By ninth grade, summer learning loss could be blamed for roughly 2/3 of the achievement gap separating income groups." And so he's out to change that. So I brought copies of this for you, just in case you might want to read the article. And I have a few extra copies if anybody in the audience wants to read it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heron. We're on to Item C8, and this is the announcement of closed session action, and there is no action to report out of closed session today. Item C9, public comments on non-agenda matters within jurisdiction of the Board of Education. Do we have any public comment for this section?
No, we do not.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, any items that need to be polled?
I would like to poll the personnel list, only to abstain.
So that's D10. Any others? You're pulling for the same reason? Okay, Dr. Paz. Any others? Can I get a motion then?
I move approval of the consent calendar with those two, that one, changed.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
And I would like to comment.
Yes.
Just I want to point out that two of the items, which I wish we could have a lot more time on, but just to say thank you, the LCAN, both for the music program at Franklin and the art program at several of our schools.
The ICAN program?
ICAN program. And they're both being approved, the memos of understanding. But that is just such a beautiful program for our district. We are so blessed to have that participation. So a personal thank you to ICAN.
All right. We have a motion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. The consent agenda passed unanimously with the exception of Item D10, the human resources recommendations. Can I have a motion on Item D10?
Move D10 be approved?
I'll second it. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Abstain.
All right. So that passes 3-0 with two abstentions. At this time, we are going to move to Agenda, Item E, and this is under the Board of Education. And it's Item E1, the Adoption of Resolution Number 2013-2014/66, the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Policies Regarding Candidate Statements in the Elections for the Board of Education. Dr. Cash, I don't know if you have any comments on this?
This is pro forma required. Since we have an election, two seats are open. That needs to be adopted by the board in order to have candidate statements and run the election.
I move that Item E1 be approved?
Second. Moved by Mr. Heron, seconded by Dr. Paz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passed unanimously. It's time for Item F1. It's set for 650, but this is not a time-certain public hearing.
That is correct.
So this is a public hearing of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's 2014-2015 fiscal year budget. And Dr. Cash, I don't know if you want to start this off?
Well, I'm just going to make a brief comment, then I'm going to hand it off to someone that's more qualified than me to comment on it.
Me?
That would be you, Ms. Chite. This has been perhaps one of the most unusual years that any of us, since the passage of Prop 13, has probably been in school finance. And in order to make sense of it, to bring forward a budget that is balanced, to be adopted by the school board for next year, truly was remarkable. I want to publicly acknowledge the work of Ms. Chite and her staff, who did a tremendous job in navigating the newness of it. And I want to remind board members that the state adopted a new way to allocate funds and then did not provide school districts with a different way to even account for those funds. And it's been just incredibly hard work. I was almost going to say magical, but there's really no magic involved. It's just a lot of hard work. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Chite.
Thank you. So we're here at another adopted budget, and as you know, that we, our adopted budget is probably the most crazy budget because we don't have all the information when we're creating it. We go by the May revise, and then by the time the governor signs it, there's a lot that's changed, and I'll go over those items that have changed. The Santa Barbara Unified School District staff has prepared the fiscal year 2014-15 budget report for the board's review and approval. The 2013-14 estimated actuals and the 14-15 budget have been adopted, developed, excuse me, using the Local Control Funding Formula, or LCFF, and the budget fully supports the local accountability plan. The 2014-15 budget projects a fund balance in the general fund that meets the Santa Barbara's unified minimum recommended reserve requirement of 3 percent for the current year and two subsequent years. While the, sorry, while the state's required minimum reserve has been met, the Santa Barbara Unified still faces challenges of increasing its fund balance to the 2007-8 level of 8.85 percent. However, if the governor's rainy day fund, this is one of the biggest things that happened between May 16, when the May revise was released, and the signing of the budget, for me personally, and I think for some of the board members, that the governor's rainy day fund, if it is approved by the voters in November, in the year following a deposit into the Proposition 98 proportion of the rainy day fund, the UCS, the Unified School District would be able to have, would not be able to have reserves more than twice the minimum required by the state regulation, or that means 6 percent for us. The Santa Barbara County Education Office could provide the district with an exemption under extraordinary fiscal circumstances, but only up for up to two consecutive fiscal years within a third-year period. In the third year or any year a district does not receive an exemption, the district would need to spend down its reserve to 6 percent. The reserve cap is only active in the year immediately after the fiscal year in which the state deposits into the Proposition 98 Reserve, which the Proposition 98 is our bucket of funds. The cap on the reserve may result in a downgrade on the Santa Barbara's bond rating. Issuers won't want double-digit reserve amounts, therefore, it's possible they will downgrade the rating and result in higher interest rates for our tax revenue anticipation note, or what we call TRAN. To put this 6 percent reserve into perspective, it does not cover one month of salary and benefits, which is about $9.2 million. The 2013-14 California budget introduced the LCFF, which dramatically reformed California's education funding system. LCFF eliminated most categorical streams, replacing them with funds based on each local educational agencies, student graphic profile. The LCFF institutes a change in LEA accountability for unrestricted funds in the form of a three-year LCAP with annual updates that focuses on services and outcomes for all students with emphasis of English language learners, low-income, and foster youth students. The county's superintendents are now responsible for the oversight and approval of the district's LCAP. The county superintendent will approve the LCAP only if it is met through following criteria: adherence to the State Board of Education's template, sufficient expenditures in the district's budget to implement the LCAP, adhere to the State Board of Education's spending regulations. Under the LCFF, the county must approve the district's budget on August 15, yet the LCAP's approval date is by October 8. Our county, in all likelihood, will review both the LCAP and the LCFF at the same time to ensure the deadline is reached. If the district's LCAP fails, any of the three criteria, and the budget will also not be approved. Therefore, the district's LCAP and LCFF team have worked closely to achieve approval. The state of California has targeted eight state priorities and placed them into three categories, which will be incorporated into the LCAP, which I won't read, I don't want to bore you. It's been our bible for the past three, six months, which I'm sure you all are familiar with, and so I won't read them. On page two is a summary of how the Local Control Funding Formula works and how the formula is, how the funds are received by the district. So, Mr. Tedeschi, if you're ready for the actual dollars. I want to remind everyone that on the adopted budget, that we always have in the past not, we've reduced certain things overall. We decrease our federal funds by 10 percent because the federal government does not approve their budget until September, and we do not book donation accounts which come from PTAs, PTOs, and other donations. So you'll see a big difference between the adopted budget and first interim, which is in December. So the LCFF, you'll see a huge increase from the estimated actuals of 2013 to 106 in the adopted budget. You guys remember, and it's very close to my heart, that we had a decrease last year of almost $8 million due to the RDA release of funds in 2012-13, and I'm really hoping that this is the last year you'll have me, or hear me say that, because that won't happen again as of this moment in time. So it, there's a big increase because we received that money back for next year, for 14-15. So that's seven, almost $8 million, and then the rest is the gap funding, which is a portion of the target and the percentage of the target that we receive over the next eight years. Federal revenue, we don't book this tiny little bit of revenue. It's federally, it's our students who live on federal land in the Forest Reserve. And then on the local revenue, the decrease is due to one-time funds in 2013-14. Going over to the expenditures, we have an increase in the salaries and benefits, and that's due to three items, three or four items. 3 percent increase for the entire year 14-15 that we settled on in 13-14. We had a STIRS increase, if you all are familiar, that the contribution for STIRS went up, and when we were developing the budget, we applied a 9.25 percent on the employer's side of the contribution, because that's what they were estimating the liability would be for the district. But it actually came in at 8.88, and I'll show that later on in the budget about how that, how that will increase over the next seven years. It's also because of PERS, PERS went up a little bit, and workers' comp. The reallocation of continuation from the restricted side of the budget to the unrestricted, this was one of those ones we didn't catch last year, but the continuation moved from the restricted to the unrestricted. So we just, it's just a reallocation of funds. The increase to some of the secretaries to arrange 40, and the routine restricted maintenance, which we hired, we're hiring, if you approve the LCAP in the budget, will go out and increase three maintenance and two grounds persons. The services and operating increased due to the projected election expense and our PERS payment for this year. We have two now, and so this was an increase. And then slight increase with utilities and water. Decrease for capital outlay is due to our financial system, which we're going live next Tuesday, which should be very exciting. And so that decreased due to the cost of implementing that system.
Madam President?
Sure.
Do you want questions now, or when it comes back on the agenda?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, we're in the public hearing process. Is it okay for us to ask questions at this point?
Absolutely.
Go ahead and ask questions.
Just two questions on this one, just for clarification purposes. Projected election expense for board members, that sounds onerous, but can you tell us what that is and how much it is? It's...
It's a substantial amount. The election, I believe it's about, I know it's over $100,000 for two board members. I can't, I can't remember off the top of my head what that is.
But that's just to get the names on the ballot, and it helps anybody who wants to run for office.
That's correct.
It's not helping anybody up here.
No, no. That is just, that is just administrative work for the county.
It's the charge we incur.
Right.
For having candidates on the ballot.
It's not for, it's not campaign funds or anything like that.
When I look up there, there's a million dollars in that category of an increase. Just want to make sure people understand that it's not for the...
No.
Board members.
It's not off the board members.
Thank you. The second is, does the certificated salary income of $48,909, is that adjusted at all for the results of the PERS, where we expect a savings in salary because we, 57 people are thereabouts retired, therefore, we're hoping to gain from that action?
No, it isn't, because this year, what I would like to do, and I think Dr. Christensen can confirm this, that we're interviewing hundreds of people right now to fill positions throughout the district. So what we're going to do is person left, person filled, so I can actually do the cost...
But in the planning, we put in the average cost of a certificated person.
Yes, we do.
So this is the average, okay.
This is the average.
Yeah, that's an overestimation of the actual cost.
So this number might be a little bit high.
It, it may be high, but I'm not sure you'll see a huge, huge difference once we start putting some other things in there, like first interim, we always have other people come in that we can't project. But I would say, I would say that's pretty close.
Because we're spending $513,000, hopefully, to gain some benefit from that action.
Exactly.
Thank you.
I'm with you. Okay. So restricted side of the budget, as I mentioned before, we always decrease our federal funds by 10 percent. But on the LCFF, the local control funding also comes not only from the state, but from property taxes. And for our special education students, we move property taxes over to that side of the budget to help fund special ed. And you see this more now because of not other things are in there like there used to be back in the day when we had all these categoricals. So other state revenue, reduction of, due to the $2.8 million in one-time Common Core Funds received in 13-14. And the ACIS program was reduced by 10 percent per CDE, and one-time funds for the San Marcos Culinary Program. And the other local is where we would usually, when you'll see this increase, when we get to the donation accounts, we get about $2, $2.3, $2.4 million in donation accounts that we will put in the budget come September, December, when we get that information. We ask the sites for promissory notes, and we'll get all those before we book it. So we have a, it says an increase, it's a decrease, and it's due to, it's a net effect of the 3 percent that we gave to our employees, and then the PERS and the STIRS, but also the net effect of continuation moving from the restricted side to the unrestricted side, which is mostly in the 1,000s and 3,000, or the, I'm sorry, the certificated salaries and the benefits.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chite, can I chime in, because I realized I forgot to ask you one question from the previous page, because I don't think it pulled up on the screen, because it's a little bit low. Can you talk about the, just the very bottom there, where it says, "Other state revenue," and you're talking about reductions. What's this one-time funds for the San Marcos High School Culinary Program?
This was, we supported the culinary program, and I can't, I can't speak to the exact amount, but we gave them some culinary program. I can't remember what that was, I'm sorry.
We received a large grant from a private donor. It was either 25, between $25,000 and $30,000 for the Culinary Academy.
But that wouldn't have been, would that have been...
That would have been revenue.
That could have been, yeah.
Just booked in other local revenue?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
It was specifically earmarked for that program.
So it gets put in a restricted side because it's actually allocated to that specific?
So we could have seen it, okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash.
I remembered.
I'm glad you did.
I just remembered.
Okay, so we went through the expenditures. The books and supplies again were, you know, from the, mostly from the donations and the titles and the nine, the 1,000s and 3,000s decreases due to those donation accounts and the continuation. So on the page eight, I want to go down to the restricted ending fund balance. As you can see, in the estimated actuals, we're expected to have a $2.1 million ending fund balance in that account. Therefore, in the adopted budget, as usual, we plan to spend every dime the year that we receive the funds. So you see that we are projecting to deficit spend in restricted, which is an okay thing to do as long as we have a fund balance of $1.8 million, leaving us with a planned $340,000 in ending fund balance. Next is just a graph of our reserve and net ending fund balance. As you can see, 2011, I always look at 2011 and remember those years really not very fondly, but it's nice to see how we're looking from here on out. And a lot of that is, that purple is from our special reserve fund that we got from that extra RDA money that we spoke about earlier. So as you can see, the little white line in there on 2014 is, you know, spending down that reserve amount for the restricted side, and then in 15-16, we always plan to spend every restricted dollar that we get. Mr. Heron?
Can you explain why we do that?
Those funds are generated for those kids for that year. So we, we plan to spend every dime on the students that are here. We don't like to carry large fund balances in reserves, I mean, in the restricted side of the budget, because those kids are entitled to, those students are entitled to those funds. So we try our best to spend. A lot of that, probably a lot of that reserve is probably in their donation accounts, which they're allowed to do and keep, and if they're planning to fund something else the next year, that will eat it away. Okay, so page 10. I want to talk about the components of the unrestricted fund balance and explain what's happening here. As you see in the estimated actuals, the three point, or the $7.3 million of result of our operation, that is part of spending down that fund balance from that money that we received for the RDA money. As you can see in the adopted budget, we're planning to surplus $46,599, which is fabulous. So the ending fund balance is 4.4 for the estimated actuals, and then 4.5 for the adopted. Then in the special reserve fund 17, each year we add an additional $100,000 to plan to replace our artificial turf fields that we have. We expect them to last about 10 years. So every year, we're putting $100,000 away to replace those. So that leaves us with an $8.9 million ending fund balance on our unrestricted side, which I just want to point out that once you take the reserve for the field repair and some site carts, we do electric carts every year for the sites, we have 8.5, and that's our reserve level of about 6.67 percent, which if that rainy day fund comes into effect, we would have to spend down the .67. I want to reiterate that that would not make one day, one month payroll. So if you can scroll down a little bit more, some of the things that are going to happen in the, in the future that is really going to affect our budget is the STIRS and PERS increase over the next seven years. The department, the governor has signed, the STIRS is in like an $80 billion liability for their retirement fund, and PERS, I'm not sure what the number is, but they increase every year on the employer's side. So you can see in 2014-15, I have changed the amount that is projected to be the STIRS payment for the employer, and that's 8.88 percent. So the $535,000 that you see at the bottom there in the blue, increase over prior year. So next, this year in 14-15, we will be spending a half a million dollars more on the STIRS than we did last year. And then with the PERS, it goes from 11.4 to 11.7, which is an additional $245,000. So overall, next year in retirement, we'll be paying $781,000 more... So overall, next year in retirement, we'll be paying $781,000 more in employer contribution towards PERS and STIRS. Over the next seven years, by the time we are fully funded, we will be paying 39% and 39 and a half percent more on our retirement for our employees. So we have to keep that in mind when we go through, that we have this expense out there every year. And the employee side goes up also for STIRS, but not for PERS. Next slide, enrollment. Enrollment hasn't changed very much. There's a slight growth in 15, 16. We're sticking with those projections because we're not sure still what's going to happen with TK, where it's going. I don't think that either, no one knows that I've heard about TK. So the unduplicated pupil count also is a big change from our previous budgets. We never really talked about unduplicated pupil count so much, but boy, it makes a difference now in the LCAP and the LCFF. And basically, what has happened is that if you have an English language learner who is low income, you used to be able to count that student twice, but you cannot do that anymore. You count them once. So that reduced our percentage from 56% to 54% based on the provision to schools that we have. But I wanted to show this, that this shows in each grade level or each elementary, junior high and senior high, what our percentage, what the total is and how many students we have in each one and projected. Now, we have, we have tried to, to collect data and we're going to be working with our food service people very closely, trying to identify more students so we can boost our percentages up. Lottery, lottery went up a little bit, still around. We're really happy with lottery. This is how our schools run their schools when the supplies and other tutoring and such for, for our students. Let's go to the multi-year projection.
Can you go back one slide, please?
Sure.
Just, just to make, no, one more. If that number in 213, 214, 15 was 55%, what would that mean to us?
Nothing.
Nothing?
56.
Okay, if it was 56, what would it mean to us?
That would mean about a half a million dollars over the next eight, seven years.
So it's important that people be honest about filling out the forms necessary to prove that.
Right. And some people, it's interesting that what I found out in the, you know, researching this a little bit with some of our families is that they don't necessarily want to eat free, but they didn't realize that they could do bus passes and testing for AP. So now they're more interested. And we were trying to explain that to them so that they would understand that we don't care that if, well, we do care that they eat, but we would like them to fill out the form and choose what they want to do by filling out that form, what advantages they want to take about that.
Yeah, I think that's an important message for the audience and for the people on TV to know that it's important to the whole district and to their children because an extra half a million dollars, a lot can be done with that money. So anything we can do, any help we can get to increase that to 56% would be very valuable.
That's correct. But just for clarification purposes, with the change into LCFF and the, the base funding and the supplemental funding, even without the concentration grant, even without making it up to 56%, even with the, having to work with an unduplicated pupil count, it's still more in 14, 15.
Absolutely.
Than in 13, 14. So we're still talking about more money.
That's correct.
Coming from the state for our students even without that 56%. And the 56% would be, I mean, I think it's obviously, we're at this point where we need it, but, and it's frustrating to be this close. But I also want to keep in perspective that even without that, our students are getting more funding and will be better off.
That's correct. They are. So our multi-year projections, the multi-year for the fiscal year 14 budget for the Santa Barbara Unified School District has been prepared for the board's review. The multi-year reflects LCFF funding for 14 and two subsequent years. The multi-year forecast will be different between the forecast and the actual results due to events that, and circumstances that do not occur as anticipated and those unexpected differences may be material. Stakeholders must realize, recognize these inherent limitations of the fiscal, financial forecast process. I mean, I think that I finally sent this to Novus to be put in the board packet and then I get that, the minute I did this, that the percentage changed from the gap funding from 28.05% to 29.56%. And, you know, yeah, that's not a huge increase, but the minute I went public, it changed. So, I mean, this budget constantly changes all the time. And then again, with the STIRS payment for the contribution for the employer's side. So you can see, which is really nice, that remember that each year, we're building more and more funds until we hit 2021 to reach our 12, 13 amount. And so you will see an increase every year until we get to that, until we get back to be fully funded for 12, 13 plus COLAs. So I'm not going to go through everything on here, but the main other adjustment in 15, 16 is the remaining 50% of the 3% for routine restricted maintenance. So by 15, 16, we will be back to our 3% routine restricted maintenance, which we're really proud of and we're, we have to be there by then, but we're, we're happy we have the funds to do that. Our facilities are in need of being able to be kept in good repair and is part of the LCAP. So our net gain, loss over the unrestricted and restricted side, you see that overall in 14, 15, we are deficit spending 1.8 million, but remember, that's all on the restricted side of the budget. We're anticipating in 15, 16, about a half a million dollar surplus and then 934 in 16, 17 surplus. Again, you see the breakout of how the ending fund balance is and it comes to a 6.67, a 7.8 and a 7.66 reserve level. If everything that I'm talking about today remains exactly the same, which I doubt will never happen. So the calculator, the next thing we're going to show you is the actual summary of the, what we call the BAS calculator, which is the only thing we have out there to use for the calculation. And this is the summary page and this is one of about 12 tabs on an Excel sheet. So you can see that there's our projected revenue across and you can tie that out to the multi-year projections, 106 this year, 112 next year and 114 for 16, 17. And then what you'll see here at the very bottom is our proportionality in our supplemental grant, which I apologize because the estimated total of the supplement on the concentration grant, the 4.9 million, I went into this spreadsheet and changed the percentage from 28.05 to 28.06 and it made a difference. And then I posted it and then I realized I shouldn't have changed it because my whole budget was on 28.5. So it's $1,200 off. But I wanted to point that out because you'll see that in the LCAP. And I didn't want you to look at those two numbers and say, why are they different? So it should be 4,933,127. Got that? Yeah, you got that? That's sad that I know that embedded into my brain. Okay, the next page is.
Makes me very happy.
Next page, we're, sorry, this is so small, but this is a huge document and this is our, this is our calculator. This is one tab of the BAS calculator. And I just want to show you how, you know, this is supposed to be local control and much simpler, and I tell you, this is not simple. But I'm really glad somebody has figured out how this all happens.
What version of the BAS calculator is this?
This is probably 15.7 and it started out at 1. So that was in a year's time. So, and every time you get this new calculator, you have to re-enter all the information in there. So Conrad, can we go to the top? And I just want to show you, this is how they figure out how your base grant, your grade span, your class size reduction, extra CTE and then the supplemental. And you can see over there under that column, there is no concentration grant. If we get those numbers up to 54%, we'll get about a half another, a half a million dollars added to our target, which then, the target is about 122 million. That's what we're expected to be at by the time we hit 2021. So then if you scroll down, there's a lot of ins and outs, it goes around, it talks about, you know, all kinds of stuff. I'm not, I can't even, I won't even bore you with it. But you come down to the very bottom and you see the 1.6 million, that's what we're supposed to get this year. If you scroll up just a little bit, Conrad, to the gap funding. Keep going. There it is, 6.381 right there, and that's the 28.6%, which, I changed that, it should be 25. But now it's 29.56, so they just changed it again. But that's the amount of money that we'll get extra this year to help fund everything in the LCAP. 4.9 of that will be in the LCAP. Okay. And then we go into other funds. So if you have any questions?
Board members, Ms. Timon?
This is a silly question.
There are no silly questions.
We've talked about 56% and 55%. Does it literally have to be 56% or could it be 55.5% or something of the sort, as long as it, we go over the 55?
It has to exceed 55%. So if we're 55.1, we get like 35% of the base grant times .5 or .1.
Okay.
It's a small amount, so.
Ms. Edelson?
Another possibly silly question, but you talk about a BAS calculator. Does that stand for something or is this a standard form?
It does.
It does.
It does stand for something. There are initials.
All right.
It's an acronym. I believe it's in here. It is in here and I'll find it for you.
When Ms. Chitek and I visited the Department of Finance last year, they were on version two.
Check page 14.
Thank you.
So they've had 13.7 iterations since then.
And actually, we should stop calling it the BAS calculator because BAS gave it up and gave it to FICMAT, which is our Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team.
So that we know.
That we know.
FICMAT, but it is here at the top of page 14 where it's the.
And one other thing, I take it we're in ADA for a long time now?
Oh, yeah, I don't see us, I mean, our, our property taxes are about 94 million and we're at 106 right now being funded, our entitlement. So that's a, that's a big increase. And then next year's 114 and then next year's 117. I mean, we're, as long as they keep increasing our entitlement, I doubt our property taxes will be able to catch up to that when we're, we're being funded so much more than we were before. Remember, we were reduced by 22%. So we got, we got a long way to go. And that made us go into basic aid by being deficit into basic aid.
Okay. And just for clarification, on our enrollment numbers that are like on page 11, for example, that does not include our charter schools?
No, it does not.
Okay. Any other questions? I have kind of a general question and that's about LCFF and its effect on site allocations. And I don't know, in, in years past, we would typically, as a board, we would see site allocations, we see them sort of at the end of the year when we're, we're looking at the single plans. Staff has a whole role at the beginning of the year. And part of it, almost all of it though, is, is sort of a district decisions about money coming in that's categorical and how it's going to be sent out, what's going to be kept at the district, what gets sent out to the sites. And I don't know with LCFF, if there are any mandates about what goes to sites, how does this unduplicated pupil count, does that play any role in it in terms of the district's decision-making? Is the state requiring certain things? So I don't know if you can talk to me about site allocations and the LCFF effect?
Yes, I can. It has a, it has a big effect on the sites. For example, what we used to call EIA, again, you used to be able to count the pupil twice. So now that when you do that, you can't count the pupil twice. So we have 76, 6, 6, 7,666 kids, unduplicated pupil count, whereas before we had 44,600. So now we're taking the same chunk of money and dividing it by more students. So the proportional amount goes down for these sites. That's just one part of it. Another part of the LCAP is that.
But can I just ask you on that piece alone, was it, is it a district decision before and now, or is it a state requirement that this amount go to the site for their pupils? Or did you, did the district office have?
The district office would take, let's go back when it was EIA. There was about $2 million in EIA. The district would take probably about within direct and right off the top to fund some of the salaries that we have at the office who, like assistant supes who deal right with the principals and things like that. We, I think last year was, or the year before, and it was 1.4 million we distributed, but it was a smaller number. We just, we divided into the 44, 60 into 1.4 million. Then you take this year and we, we took, and it's kind of hard to explain because we have really unrestricted funds now. So what we did is we could, we moved some things into LCAP, but we paid for things out of the, that the sites would have paid for. So that other super unrestricted area that does not have to follow the supplemental and concentration grant is lightened up. They don't see it, but when they start putting in their budgets, they'll say, oh, I don't have to pay for that. The district's paying for that. Oh, I don't have to pay. Well, we didn't reduce that bucket. We took things out of that bucket so they have more money in that bucket, but I, they just got their budgets. They haven't processed this all through yet. You know what I mean? They, this is, this is really difficult to do when you're approving the LCAP and having a supporting document like this that has to go with it in June. Because it sets everybody back. The sites can't get their site plans, they can't get their budgets done before they go. They want to leave, they want to go on vacation. So we have to think about how we're going to do this next year so that we can get those site budgets to the sites faster than we did this year.
But, but the fundamental, I think, answer to your question is, is that just like there are districts that are winners and districts that are losers in LCFF, we have school sites that are winners and losers in the same way. Because in the past, they would get funded twice and now they're only getting funded once.
But it also sounds like that our, our business office is really taking a careful look and making sure that things that they would have been funding before through their site funds are now going to be funded through LCFF.
Yeah, you can.
Directly from the district office.
Yeah, the LCAP committee.
So hopefully, there won't be this huge shock when it comes to actually implementation if they're, if you're talking about dramatic differences.
And I, and I think what's going to, I've had some emails already today that say, I want to put in for, say, my garden coordinator. Well, the, the district's paying for those. So they, they haven't, they haven't realized everything that we're paying for yet. So that's important for them to know. They'll go, oh, I have that money I don't need to spend. I can spend that money on something else.
But to get to your second part, in terms of what happens going forward, is there, will we see this in a single plan at some point?
Yes, you will. Each school will be required to produce a single plan for student achievement. The template has remained unchanged from their, when they revised it last year, though at every meeting I go to, they refer to, and I'm talking about CDE employees, refer to school site LCAPs. But there is no such thing at this particular state. And you'll also note that in Ms. Chitek's presentation, one of the requirements for the district is to use the LCAP template in order for our LCAP to be approved. So we're telling our school sites, you're at this particular point, use the single plan for student achievement template, even though the state keeps talking about the school site LCAP. So we're going to, we'll try to organize our single plan around the eight state. So we're going to, we'll try to organize our single plan around the eight state priorities. And so in anticipation of the state changing the template for the single plan to be more like the district's LCAP, but yes, that's what will happen.
Because it sounds like it's going to be quite complicated trying to compare 1314 to 1415. And we would also need to be looking at, well, this used to be in the single plan and now it's in the LCAP. So that's going to be complex. Dr. Paz?
Similarly, when we look at the deferred maintenance fund, so now it's part of LCFF, how are we going to track that in future budgets? I know it's still noted right now in the current budget, but how are we going to, how am I going to pick up this budget and say, oh, that was? Or is it just going to be blended into that?
We, we can see it and we can report on that, but you, you won't be able to see it. But we can, we can do that because what, you know, what we don't want to do is, it's, it's really unnerving when you go restrictions to unrestricted.
Yeah.
And you sit there and you go, oh my gosh, you know, you don't have control over each one of those little buckets, you know? So it was, it was a panic for bean counters like myself and my staff to sit there and go, oh my gosh, you know, we can't give more than what we have. You know what I mean? When we're trying to figure this out. So to get back to your point, we have coded them. Like for the LCAP funds, we have a resource for that. And it's in the unrestricted side of the budget, but it's in there so that when the state comes down and says, I want to see every one of your expenditures, and I, I'm sure either the county or somebody will ask us for that, or there are auditors, we can pull it and we know exactly what's being put in there.
So we're tagging all of...
You betcha.
Well, plus in the LCAP itself, in the very first eight priority, is the issue in relationship to the Williams Act compliance, school facilities. And so there will always be some accountability in relationship to routine restricted maintenance or deferred maintenance in relationship to maintaining school facilities. So we will, we will be tracking it and reporting it back to you.
And you'll probably see it in the LCAP.
Yes, it is in the LCAP.
In the eight state priorities.
Ms. Limon? So along these lines, I'm just wondering what kind of guidance is given to our site leaders about how to talk about this? Because it doesn't sound like a lot of people know what this means. It's exciting, it's local control, people bought into local control. And when they get to school sites and realize, well, the district is paying for some things, but actually you don't have other things. And I guess I sometimes worry of, you know, simplifying it into just winners and losers because if that's the message that gets out to the public, that creates some challenges. So how, what kind of guidelines or what's happening with the site leaders as far as helping them think about how to talk about this? My fear is I've already heard some schools kind, or representatives from schools say they're, they're not getting money. It's all, you know, being eaten up by the district or so forth. And it wasn't explained this way.
Well, what's interesting is some schools are receiving more money than they have in the past, while other schools are receiving less. And that's based entirely upon the unduplicated pupil count process required by LCFF. So this is a complex process with multiple moving parts that's changing regularly. We've had many, many meetings with the principals. We've gone over every draft of the LCAP. It's going to be part of everything we do over the summer, including a significant amount of time at our leadership charge in August, where we will actually talk about probably every line in the LCAP, what it means to you as a school and how you can communicate what it means to your community at your school site. So this will not be perfect. We'll make mistakes. We'll misfire. It's just, and all of us, and men probably make more, make division more than anyone else, just kind of waiting for the next thing to happen from the state in relationship to whether the governor's going to sign all the budget trailers, whether he's going to veto some, sign some, and what else will happen in the legislative session, so. But your point is well taken. The communication regarding this is going to be essential. We'll try to be as united as we can in relationship to that, so it's a consistent message from each of our school leaders to their school communities.
Right. And I guess I'm also thinking more along the lines of site versus district where I think, gosh, I see some things on the LCAP that are very exciting that are district that are new. And I don't want that to be interpreted by sites as that took our money away or money away from the students because it's being invested in other areas.
Well, the reality is, is they're not getting, overall, the allocations to our school sites is substantively the same amount that they received in the past. So it's just the way that it has been distributed that has changed and that's a reflection of the law, so.
And I want to, I want to reiterate that really the, what we call the 0790 account or the LCAP account, and going back to the EIA funding, this is where the bucket has really changed as far as, from going from duplicated to unduplicated. But as I mentioned before, we lightened up their budgets. They're really super unrestricted budget that they can do anything with. And we lightened that up. And I don't think they've had it long enough to realize that we've lightened it up. I don't think they've connected the dots yet and they're, you know, this is the first time they've seen it, like, what, last Thursday? And we've done some revising since then. Their titles, excuse me, their titles are still all the same, so, or basically the same. Some qualified this year that weren't qualified last year.
And by titles, you mean the federal?
The federal title ones. Sorry. Mister, doctor, whatever.
We've also, we've also made it clear to them that you have not approved the LCAP or the budget. And there could be changes to the LCAP and/or budget this evening. And so as Meg talked about this earlier, this process is, this new process is onerous for school administrators. And this first year is extraordinarily so because of the uncertainty of everything. And we're hopeful that as the process bears out through the 1415 school year, and we are working through that, that there'll be more certainty in their site allocations. They'll know what they need to do, how they're going to spend their money a year from now because we will have had this year of experience. But, you know, we, I, trust me, I, you know, just was sitting in this room with all the principals just a few weeks ago or a week and a half ago and telling them, yes, this is what we think you're going to get, but don't spend it because remember, the school board still has to approve the LCAP. And there may be questions in relationship to any item on that that could substantively change this. So it's, it's a new, it's a, as Dr. Christensen would say, this is a second order change for our organization. And it's requiring new thinking, adaptive thinking.
And I want to say one thing. I know Ben, you're chomping at the bit here. But I find it really kind of exciting and cool to see where we're going educationally for three years. Because I've always had to do a three-year budget. Now I feel like they have to do a three-year plan, so I'm all over this. I think it's great. I think it's a positive thing. We just need to be able to fine tune it. We've only had the LCAP, what, since end of January? And we've had to scramble and spend a lot of time trying to get it as perfect as we can. But it's, it's been a, it's been an uphill.
Well, I think one of the biggest documents that you as board members will have to look at to understand the, the level of understanding of the principals is going to have to be their school site plan. Because in order for us to even get that, get it approved through the county, we have to show how the site funds are aligned to the LCAP goals. And the only way, the document that we would do that, the process we would use to align that is the school site plan. So I'm hoping, as we do around Robin discussions with the principals, that you'll have the LCAP in hand and the school site plan in hand and actually seeing how the schools are aligning their goals to the LCAP.
All right. If there is no public comment at this time, Mr. Herron, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And we will move on to our action agenda. First up is G1, the approval of the Local Control Accountability Plan for 2014 through 2017. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, Madam President. This most recent iteration of the LCAP plan contains some changes based upon input received at the last board meeting from the public and from board members. It also reflects changes that were suggested and/or required by the County Office of Education in order for them to approve the LCAP in its current iteration. Dr. Drati is here to answer questions and to make the presentation.
Yes, I believe Dr. Cash basically stated what I was going to state.
Oh, sorry.
But I was going to give an example of one of the changes is minor, but last, at the last board meeting, it was suggested that we put parentheses around specific names of programs. And in the LCAP, you will see that, for, for instance, you will see that in parentheses, you'll see parentheses around teacher match while we describe the process and act of teacher screening. So through, through the LCAP, you'll see that change is made. And we also sought feedback from the county office, which I think was a good idea because we wanted to know if we were going to get the, we were going to get the LCAP adopted by the board tonight, that it isn't going to be something, so we wouldn't be stuck in a situation in which the county office turned us down. That would extend this process longer. So we sought feedback from them. And it was telling, but the major changes from their feedback was, you will notice on page 21, you will notice that page 21 has a lot more information than what it did from the previous iteration. And mainly, what we did was we just, we needed to identify how we were supporting foster youth and, and students, students that are socio-economically disadvantaged. At the first, at the previous iteration, there was a lot of focus on EL, not so much on those two other groups. So although we did have, although we did describe plans for that, we didn't explicitly state it. So, so that's, that's the major, that's the major change that we have in page 21.
Mr. Herron? On page 21, under the anticipated expenditures, are those basically what we had before or have there been anything major there added?
What we have had before. We just needed to make an alignment that we are supporting, those programs are supporting SCD and foster youth. Page 23, maybe I'll stop there and see if you guys have more questions in that part.
I think that we'll probably hold our questions until after we have public comment.
Okay. But I do want to point out one other, some other change on page 23. You'll, you'll see on page 23, it was suggested that we provide narratives for, for some of the expenditures. So that way, people, people at the county office would understand how we're actually using those funds to support those specific groups I've mentioned. So, so that's, that's another change from the last iteration. At this point, I'm open for questions.
All right. So let's go ahead. Do we have public comment on this, Mr. Herron?
Yes, we do. We'll start, I'll, I'll name three names and please come to the podium. And we have three minutes and I'll let you know by about 30 seconds before you should be finished. Andrea Medina Ramirez, followed by Irlanda Alvarez, followed by Lisa Brackbold.
Good evening. My name's Andrea Medina Ramirez. I'm the Family Engagement Network Coordinator. The Family Engagement Network, FEN, has been following the developments of the LCAP process and we would like to take this opportunity to comment. FEN is a network of community organizations working together to support families. We collaborate to provide a coordinated and comprehensive system of local programs and services designed to help families navigate the journey from childbirth and/or career so they can support their children's success at every step of the way. Through partners like FEN, working with the school district, we can help increase student achievement by ensuring that all parents have the knowledge, the skills, tools, and support they need for their children's academic and social success. Currently, the FEN partners include Just Communities, Parent Project, Future Leaders of America, and the United Parents, Padres Unidos. Additional organizations are in the process of becoming FEN partners. We applaud the Santa Barbara Unified School District for having done many things right with the LCAP process. The information meetings, community forums, and public hearings all serve to inform and involve the school communities and the community at large so they could have a voice in the development of the LCAP plan, its goals and strategies. Throughout this past spring, there were four priorities addressed by United Parents, Padres Unidos, and these were incorporated in its recommendations to the LCAP. These included support for English learners, support for parent engagement, support for children in poverty, and support for language access. We are gratified that the LCAP addresses all of these areas. In particular, we are very glad to see that the position of the Director for English Learner Services and Parent Engagement is included in the LCAP. Parents play a vital role in the education of their children. We believe that this plan will go far to help English learners and the ELACs and will provide, and will help provide the support that parents need so they can become better partners with their schools. And we signed this letter, Linda Guereña from Parent Project, Jared Shores from Just Communities, myself from FEN, Salvador Guereña from United Parents, Padres Unidos, and Gabriela Rodriguez from Future Leaders of America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miembros of the Consejo Educativo y administradores del distrito, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Irlanda Alvarez. Vengo representando a Padres Unidos. Estamos aquí para apoyar el CAP. Reconocemos todo el duro trabajo que tomó diseñar este plan integral. Queremos dar las gracias al Distrito Escolar por su liderazgo y la forma que utilizamos, utilizaron para producir el CAP. Con algo tan importante como esto, es una, es de suma importancia que la comunidad escolar, las familias de escuelas y la comunidad en general estén bien informados y que se les proporcionen muchas oportunidades para participar y aportar sus opiniones. El CAP pertenece a la comunidad a lo largo del invierno y primavera. Este Distrito Escolar se acercó a su comunidad a través de foros, reuniones con ELAC, con DILAC, comités asesores y por medio de audiencias públicas. Como ustedes saben, nuestros padres líderes estaban aquí en las reuniones de, de la junta escolar proporcionando su aporte y haciendo conocer su presencia. Como Padres Unidos hicimos nuestra parte para informar a nuestros padres líderes, para solicitar sus comentarios y estamos muy contentos de ver algunas de las recomendaciones incluidas en LCAP ante usted, ante ustedes hoy. Felicitamos al Distrito Escolar por su enfoque inclusivo en la participación de padres en el proceso de planificación LCAP. En el futuro, los LCAP escolares locales también deberían seguir este enfoque inclusivo a medida, a medida que desarrollan sus propios planes de la escuela y que proporcionen oportunidades significativas de participación de los padres para que sean parte del proceso de toma de decisiones. Esto es algo que no solo debe existir en un plan, pero que se convierta en una práctica regular. Para finalizar, nos gustaría indicar la importancia de hacer todo lo que podamos para asegurar que cuando los niños llegan a la secundaria estén suficientemente competentes en el lenguaje y matemáticas para que puedan ser considerados elegibles para la universidad, sobre todo en el cumplimiento de los requisitos AG. Apoyamos firmemente las estrategias LCAP como tutoría después de la escuela y especialmente la provisión para el tiempo de aprendizaje extendido para elevar el rendimiento estudiantil en matemáticas. Nuestro objetivo debe ser para el noveno grado, los estudiantes estén en una vía de, a la universidad. Puede ser todos, puede ser que no todos elijan optar por ir a la universidad, pero vamos a hacer lo que podamos para ayudarles a elevar su nivel de competencia lo suficientemente temprano para que sean elegibles para la universidad. Gracias.
Thank you.
Members of the school board and district administrators, good evening. My name is Irlanda Alvarez. I am here representing United Parents, Padres Unidos. We are here to support the LCAP. We recognize all the hard work that it took to lay out this comprehensive plan. And we want to thank the school district for its leadership in the way it went about to produce the LCAP. With something as important as this, it is so important that the school community, school families, and the community at large are well informed and that they are provided lots of opportunities to get involved and to provide their input. The LCAP belongs to the community. Over the course of the winter and the spring, this school district reached out to its community through forums, meetings with the ELACs, with the DILAC, advisory committees, and through public... public hearings. As you are aware, our parent leaders were here at school board meetings throughout the spring, providing their input and making their presence known. As Padres Unidos, we did our part to inform our parent leaders, to solicit their feedback, and we are so pleased to see some of those recommendations included in the LCAP before you today. We congratulate the school district for its inclusive approach at parent involvement in the LCAP planning process. Going forward, the local school LCAPs should also follow this inclusive approach as they develop their own school plans, and that they provide meaningful parent engagement opportunities for them to be part of the decision-making process. This is something that should not just exist in a plan, but become a regular practice. Our last comment, we would like to make concerns, the importance of doing all we can to ensure that by the time children reach junior high, they are sufficiently proficient in language and math, so that they can be considered college-eligible, particularly in meeting A through G requirements. We strongly support the LCAP strategies such as after-school tutoring, and especially the provision for extended learning time to raise student achievement in math. Our goal should be that by ninth grade, all students are on a college track. Every student may or may not opt to actually go to college, but let's do all we can to help them raise their proficiency level early enough, so that they are college-eligible. Thanks again for helping our parents be part of the LCAP process.
Lisa?
I'm Lisa Bravo. I'm the Executive Director of Family Service Agency. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. We wanted to tell you congratulations on completion of the LCAP. That's quite a significant achievement. I don't need to tell you that, you already know. Family Service Agency has been working in partnership with SBUSD for about 20 years, providing school counselors and social workers. We bring both expertise and a small amount of funds, about $180,000, that we use to match UAR funds, so that we can provide even more mental health assistance. The counselors and social workers are listed on page 17 of the LCAP. Family Service Agency has also been one of the contractors providing mental health therapy for special education. It looks like the district is now planning to bring some or all of these services in-house, hiring mental health therapists for special education, that's item G6 on your agenda, and providing stipends to interns for the school counseling and social work. My hat is off to you for trying to figure out how to increase support for students even with limited district funds. We are certainly all in the same sort of limited funds situation. Family Service Agency is fortunate to have a meeting with Assistant Superintendent Handel on Thursday to discuss the district's plan for counseling and social work services for next year, and we're hopeful that we can continue to partner and leverage the resources we both bring to the table. Thank you very much for your partnership.
Thank you. All right. If that's it for public comment, Mr. Herron, are there comments or questions from board I feel like you've hashed this all through, and... Okay, I have a couple of questions, since I was not able to be here at the last meeting. And one question that I had was on, it's sort of a page 11, page 12, it's more of a formatting issue, I think, than anything...
It's been revised.
Has it been revised?
Yeah, I sent you an email, and you have the revised copy there.
Great. Which one is it here?
It's the big, giant document that says revised.
Oh, of course. That one. All right, so we see the change here on page 11 and 12? And this was about the science piece and science camp, and where it was placed on page 11, and then where it ended up on page 12?
Yes.
And so, great. So one of the action items for year one in science is that all six-grade pupils will be attending outdoor science camp through the LCAP.
Yep.
As well as a lot of other stuff going on with the implementation of the NGSS standards K and up. And my second question, and I see that it's been kind of addressed with the, what the county asked...
Yeah.
...in terms of explaining things, and that was about the Student Reintegration Academy. So if I could hear more about the student...
Well, the name's been changed.
Okay, what's it now?
It's now called the Expedition Academy, and it was formerly known as the Charger Academy.
Okay, and can you tell me more? I mean, the Charger Academy was something that was paid for by Dos Pueblos. And so I guess my question is, why is the district taking it over? Is this something that's going to be at Dos Pueblos?
Yes, it will be at Dos Pueblos. It's similar to what the posse does in terms of supporting students socially, emotionally, and academically. But Posse program through San Marcos and La Cumbre focuses on students that have the potential to be successful in A through G courses. This more or less focuses on students, a lot of times, that are really struggling, and far below basic students, that we need to make sure that they become grade-level. So the Charger Academy has always supported those students, and their data has been very successful. We wanted to support them through a fourth cohort this next year, and evaluate their success, and we think if that's something they can show in a four-year process, that might be something we could emulate to the other school sites.
So how many students are in, when you say this cohort, how many students are...
I don't have the exact figures at hand, but I would say probably...
If it's four cohorts, it's 30, it's about 120 students.
Do they run at a full size? I thought that it was one of its features.
It's smaller, it's powered by 25 students.
All right. Mr. Herron?
Just for clarification, it's on page 15, Goal 1, Action Item 3.
Page 15.
I actually really like this big printout. But then it's also laid out at the very end, now there's a narrative attached to it. Or maybe it's...
You will now see it.
Yeah, here it is, yeah, on page 23, when it talks about that, the Expedition Academy, there it is.
But we wanted to see the whole program through, to effectively evaluate it, so like I said, this year we'll study it and see how students do, and then make decisions.
So it's only in, I should go back to where it is, is it only in for one year? Or is there a placeholder for it in future years?
There's no placeholder for future years. We're just going to want to evaluate it and see where we're at with that.
No other comments or questions, board members?
Sorry.
Ms. Limone?
On that note, are there any other programs on page 23 that are site-specific? Because that one's a site-specific one, and I see that the other ones seem to be more broad, and I want to make sure I didn't miss it.
Yes, we have expanded the Support Mentoring Program through Santa Barbara Junior High and Santa Barbara High. That is the old Posse model. If you look at page 21, page 21, Action Number 11.
So now that we've changed names, it's hard to follow. It's like, I just know it as Posse.
Yeah, unfortunately, we won't be calling it that anymore.
So, I'm sorry, what is it called over here?
Even at La Cumbre and San Marcos?
We call it Cohort Support/Mentoring.
So you said that's on page 21?
Yeah, Number 11.
Number... Oh, in the up there. I was looking in the wrong section. Okay, great. I think we can probably come up with a jazzier title than that.
Yeah. Yeah, we have one right now that we're working on with our attorneys to determine if we can copyright it.
All right, super.
So those are the only two areas where it's one or two sites as opposed to a few, right?
Yes, yes.
And they're only for year one?
Yes.
Well, the expanding the cohort is, we...
To take through the cohort.
Yeah, we want, in the, we want it to, we want to, we need, it needs to go more than one year. I mean, the first cohort, and I'm struggling not to use the word that we can't use anymore, what was for three years. And after two years, we were confident that we, there were certain aspects of it based upon an analysis that Dr. Madrigal did, that we were able to replicate. So we wanted to try to do the same thing on the East Side with Cleveland, Franklin, Santa Barbara Junior, Santa Barbara High School, and determine if what we learned on the West Side was replicable with the same increase in kindergarten readiness and student achievement with those four schools. And we think it's going to take at least two years in order to really understand if it is. And if so, then we would look to expand it again further throughout our district.
And so just, I guess, from my thinking, it sounds like, well, there's already a West Side initiative of sorts, this is the East Side, and then the Dos Pueblos has a different program, and that's how we kind of think about the closest thing to equity that we could do. I just want, yeah.
Correct, yes, yes.
Mr. Herron?
We have received, as requested, a list of items that are not included in the ICAP that came up through all the comments, and we can't do everything, that's for sure. But just a couple of the things that hopefully down the line, you know, CSEA asked for a lot of increased hours and a lot of different topics, and so I think over the period of time, we should look at those and see if they have meaning. Padres Unidos asked for a district-wide language access coordinator, so we have allocated dramatic funds to this particular topic, so I'm very pleased with that. The Santa Barbara Arts Alliance asked for a VAPA coordinator, and I know that we haven't approved the long-range plan or strategic plan for that, but hopefully down the road, we'll give thought to that coordinator. The arts are extremely important in our community. And then there were other things, like the Lyndon Moot Bell Expert. One that is dear to my heart is the State-of-the-Art Assistive Technology Center. I can go on the web and search for assistive technology and find things that we've never dreamed of here. So I think, I think there's a lot of things in that area that can benefit our students, and I hope that over a period of time, we can look at what's available there and maybe do a better job of providing state-of-the-art technology for assistive technology. Inclusion specialist, I think we're working on that. We have a great lady who is working on inclusion, trying to teach our people about inclusion. And dyslexia is another area that has, that's my phone, sorry about that. I thought I had turned it off. I guess I should shut up. Okay.
Maybe you should turn the phone off.
Yeah. Dyslexia has been around for an awful long time, and I think 20 years ago, there was a study done by this district that never was basically implemented. I was fortunate enough to have Joan give the copy of that to me, so I think it's an area we can spend more time on, too. Thank you.
Ms. Limone?
So I think it's really hard to predict, I mean, I know that by 2021, we're supposed to have more funds, but I also, there's so much happening with the budget in Sacramento that it's hard to really grasp my mind around the fact that we maybe will have more funds. But I think of how we went around our facilities master plan and the board's input on how we thought about prioritizing, and so I wonder if when things settle down a bit, there would be the opportunity for, to come back and look at some of these things, and even think about how do we prioritize. So if funds do become available in five years, we have some of these things on our radar, and they don't really get lost, that they would, if there really is board interest and priority and district support around certain things, that some of this doesn't get lost, because I feel so much time and energy went into this, for this first round, and I feel like we got really good information that could be used in the future if the opportunity presents itself. So I don't know if there's room to have that kind of conversation at some point when things settle down.
All right, this is an action item. I do make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the Local Control Accountability Plan for 2014 through 2017.
I'll second it. Moved by Dr. Paz, seconded by Ms. Idelson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passed unanimously. Wow.
It's only right to say thank you to everybody. I mean, I won't pick out anybody in particular, but there were so many people that worked on this, that it's a compilation of a lot of hard work, so thank you to all the people who participated.
I want to remind the board that it was Dr. Drotti who chaired the LCAP committee. He's the primary driver behind the document, and he deserves a lion's share of the praise in getting it to its current state for adoption. So thank you, Dr. Drotti, very much for your leadership.
All right, we've had a public hearing on this item, but now it's time for Action G2. This is the approval of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's 2014-2015 fiscal year budget. I don't know if we have any public comment on this separately.
No, we don't.
All right.
No, we do not.
Are there any further questions on this item? If not, can I have a motion?
I move approval of the 2014-2015 adopted budget.
Second.
With praise to Ms. Tae.
And Mr. Tedeschi and crew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passed unanimously as well. That deserves as many claps and hurrahs. This has been a heck of a year. All right, next up is Item G3. This is Board Action on Petition for Readmission of Expelled Students. We do have two cases on this.
I will move in case number 201314-19 that we accept the reentry from expulsion.
All those in favor? Oh, sorry, I need a second, don't I? Hold on.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the second case?
In case number 201314-20, I move for the, accepting the reentry from expulsion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, those both passed unanimously. Item G4 is the approval of revised management job description for an internal auditor. Dr. Cash?
Well, Madam President, you missed a little of the fireworks around this, and we decided to bring back just the job description with a slight change to reflect the reality of this position, and we have Dr. Christiansen here to present it to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. On the action agenda tonight for the board's consideration is a revised job description for the internal auditor position. Although the district has authorized both an internal auditor and a dispersing officer position, only the internal auditor position will be filled at this time. The internal auditor job description not only reflects the duties that the district currently requires to be performed, but also reflects the added responsibility of designing, implementing, and monitoring internal controls in the Tyler Munus Operating System. After the discussion at the last board meeting, these duties were added to the appropriate job description, which is included in your packet. Please also note that this internal auditor position requires a certified public account and license. Finally, the administration recommends approving the updated job description for the internal auditor.
Thank you. Board members?
We had a bit of a discussion about this, so we wanted to bring it back to see if you had anything to add to it.
Well, I did not. It looked straightforward to me, especially with the additions to it. So if there is anything else, then we can go ahead and get a motion.
I make the motion that we approve the revised management job description, internal auditor.
I'll second that.
All right, moved by Dr. Paz and seconded by Ms. Limone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Item G5, Approval of Resolution 2013/14-67 and the Spending Plan for the State Education Protection Account, EPA, Funds Received in Fiscal Year 2014. Protection Account, EPA, funds received in fiscal year 2014-15.
Madam President, this is Prop 30, and this is required by law that the board adopt a resolution. And Mr. Tedeschi is here to present the item.
I'll be real quick. Just another exciting budget item for you to approve here tonight. Just a little background, like Dr. Cash said, it was Prop 30 back in 2012, expected to generate between $6 and $9 billion in revenues annually over the next seven years. The funds are deposited and distributed from a special account established by the initiative called the Education Protection Account, EPA. The proposition provided that all K-14 local agencies have the sole authority to determine how the funds received from the EPA are spent with the following provisions. The spending plan must be approved by the governing board during a public meeting. EPA funds cannot be used for the salaries or benefits of administrators or any other administrative costs as determined through the account code structure. And each year, the local agency must publish on its website an accounting of how much money was received from the EPA and how the funds were to be expended. And that's what you have here. We expect to receive $2,724,134 next year and to all be spent on instruction, salaries, and benefits for teachers in the classroom. So it's our recommendation that the board approve resolution 201314-67 and the spending plan for the EPA funds for fiscal year 2014-15. Any questions?
Board members?
I will move. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Herron and seconded by Dr. Paz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passed unanimously. Thank you very much. And now it's item G6, the approval of mental health therapist job description.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We have both Ms. Rodriguez and Dr. Christensen. This is a subtle change resulting in a, not a dramatic change, but a significant change in our mental health staffing in our, in our district. And so we have, in relationship to special ed and the job description, our two experts.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Good evening, Kate Parker and board members. The proposal is for three full-time mental health therapists. And it, these therapists will serve the CTE program, regional programs, and also the ED classes that we created this past year. And that's at Dos Pueblos High School, Santa Barbara High School, San Marcos, and Galita Valley, and Harding now. It was at Cleveland, we moved over to Harding. And we feel the reason why it would be in our benefit is that, first of all, the SALPA receives state funding, and it's mental health, and it's very restrictive. And we can only spend it on mental health services. So as a result, this coming year, SALPA, as we're going, the model is pay-as-you-go, 100%. And the recommendation from SALPA was that districts, you need to either hire your own mental health therapists or continue contracting. So of course, we did our due diligence and we researched. And as a result, we find that, first of all, we have this whole movement in mental health. And we would like to have our mental health therapists collaborating with our school psychologists and our counselors. And this is part of a huge vision of RTI, moving forward on our behavior piece. So we feel that our mental health therapists will be a part of our REP meetings and also in collaboration of working with our school psychologists and also our counselors. That is, that is the quality that we are lacking, as consistency and also with three mental health therapists. We're not contracting out with various, which we have in the past with FSA, which did a wonderful, provided wonderful service, also Casa Pacifica and STAR. But as a result, we have all of these agencies out there, and it's been very difficult to bring them in and then work collaboratively with our staff. So we're recommending that we hire three mental health therapists for this coming school year. The benefits, again, as I've stated, is that not only will our staff be able to work with our, with, with the mental health therapists, we will also be able to lower some of the cost. And in this way, it would be, for example, with our ED classes, we had to spend an additional $70,000, whereas opposed with next year, we will absorb that cost with our mental health therapists. In addition to that, we've had cases where we've had to have one student that costs us about $25,000. Again, that cost will be absorbed with our mental health therapists that we will have on staff. So it's a benefit for all of us. And at this time, I would like Margaret Christensen to present the positions.
Thank you, Helen. There is no credential for mental health therapists in the certificated side. Consequently, these employees would be hired as classified managers at a salary similar to school psychologists. In terms of recruiting for these positions, the position requires a marriage and family therapist, MFT license, or a clinical social work, LCSW license. And it is our understanding, based on some expert advice, that Santa Barbara has a more than adequate supply of MFTs and LCSWs, and that the salary we are offering is attractive. Consequently, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the mental health therapist job description as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Christensen. Board members? Ms. Idelson?
I have some questions about, so currently, you said that FSA, which is Family Service Agency, is contracted, or how, how is it set up currently?
Yes, we have a contract with FSA, and we also have, we contract with Casa Pacifica and STAR. So we have three different agencies.
And is there funds that come through that?
Yes. It's the mental health funding that comes from the state, and they allocate it to the SALPA, and then SALPA allocates to the districts that are within the SALPA.
So will those funds still be coming to the district?
Yes.
Without those agencies involved? Is that how?
The decision would be, our decision whether we're going to continue contracting with agencies, or we will hire our own mental health therapists.
But this description is to go with the district's own?
We are, we are recommending that we hire our own mental health therapists.
And then will the three agencies be involved any longer at all?
No, they will not.
Okay.
And I should say, no, they will not in this particular capacity, because they have other things, many other things that they do for our district.
Yes, with respect to special ed, no, but with other gen ed, probably yes.
So do they currently, so counseling would remain, or is this the bulk of it?
For special ed, no. We would have our mental health therapists that would provide the individual or group counseling.
And how many people would be hired?
Three.
Three, okay. Ms. Limon?
So I asked some questions earlier, and I actually just, I know a lot of work went into it, so thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. But I thought I actually would share, because I think it's important to know. So we, it's, we spend approximately $220,000 plus on consulting now. And by moving to this, the saving looks like it's almost at 130, it's like a few cents short of $130,000. And I just thought that those figures were important, because I didn't see them, but I know work went into kind of calculating this figure, so I wanted to share that with the board.
Dr. Paz?
Now, is that savings strictly on the, on the personnel side, or is that savings that you alluded to in terms of savings that we're doing in terms of providing services?
It's, it's savings on providing the services, which I had stated that we have, we have different cases out there, and we want to bring it under one umbrella. And that would be our three mental health services, mental health therapists, and they would provide those services. Right now, we're contracting with different agencies, and the cost is increasing. In addition to that, we would be able to control our costs by offering the salary that we, we have created, which Dr. Christensen had shared.
May I follow up with another question? So who in your area of work is going to be supervising these three individuals?
Oh, our program facilitator, Lauren Myers.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Can I have a motion?
I will move to approve the mental health therapist job description.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving to item G7, this is the acceptance of Measure Q and Measure R 2010 Citizens Oversight Committee annual reports. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, Madam President. We've put both Measures Q and R on, on the same agenda item, understanding that they represent our two primary attendance areas of our elementary and secondary schools. I want to publicly acknowledge our citizen committee oversight members for continuing to provide our community with significant service, volunteering to ensure that the district continues to expend the money in accordance with the promise that we made to the voters in 2010. So with that, we'll start it. Dave Hetjank, and away you go.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. We've been meeting quarterly, the Citizens Oversight Committee. They've been receiving updates of the projects, a complete breakdown of costs for each project, line item by vendor, so they can see all the details of where each dollar is going that's out there in the construction process. In addition, we've been holding meetings off-site whenever possible, so the committee members have a chance to tour construction in progress and completed projects. Both of our committee chairs are here tonight to answer any questions you may have. The bylaws of the Citizens Oversight Committee require the annual report to the board. And they have also received the audit that was done on the bond funds.
Sorry, I'm just pulling up my documentation for it here. Board members?
I should mention that Greg Levin and Eric Peterson are the chairs, and they've, I thank them for their work. It's always, whenever you go to elect a chair, there's a dead silence in the committee, so...
You don't show up, you get appointed. And I just want to be sure, I mean, obviously, this is really, it's intended for the board, it's really intended for the public. And, and so, you know, not very many people are here tonight, and not very many people actually watch this on television. How accessible is this on the web? How clear is it if people are, or, you know, if people are searching, saying, what's going on with, with Santa Barbara Unified Bonds?
All documents that the committee receives are uploaded to the website, including all the detailed reports, the minutes.
And is it?
If they click on business or facilities, they can get them.
They'll find the link easily. Okay. Any questions on this? I do need action. And I think I'm going to ask for action separately on each report.
I will move to accept the Measure Q, a Citizens Oversight Committee annual report.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously on the Measure Q annual report.
I'll move for the acceptance of Measure R, 2010 Citizens Oversight Committee annual report.
I'll get a second. All right. And that was moved by Ms. Idelson and seconded by Ms. Limon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passed unanimously as well. So thank you so much, Mr. Herron.
Yeah, just one comment, just to make it very clear. The main point of these committees is to ensure that we are spending the money in accordance with the bond that was passed by the public. And in both of these cases, the chair of the committee has, and the committees have represented that, yes, we have done that. The funds expended match what the voters voted for. So thank you very much.
Thank you both very much for your service.
Thank you.
And the committees do ask a lot of questions, so it's not just a rubber stamp.
Thank you.
I would just add that we also...
And I would like you to come to the mic and add that, please.
Can we just say one quickly? We also understand that we represent the committee to the public and the importance of the public in understanding how the money's spent. So in addition to making sure that it's correct, we also realize that there, that we represent a group that's out in the community. So we appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Board members, item H1. This is our conference agenda item, the first one. This is the review of the 2014 developer fee justification study and the process for increasing school fees.
Madam President, I'm going to keep David Hetjank up here, because this is an item straight out of facilities. Mr. Hetjank?
Thank you, Dr. Cash. The State Allocation Board, every two years, adjusts the maximum level that districts can charge for developer fees. And we currently charge Level 1 developer fees. This typically happens in January, and it happened this year in January of 2014. Following that increase, the district approved, or the board approved a purchase order for Schoolworks to conduct a study. The cost of that study was $9,000. Every year, we looked at the cost of a study and when will we be able to make that money back with the increase of fees to make sure we're not losing money. And we figured we would make back that increase in four to five months, and this will be in effect for two years. Schoolworks did our previous study, and so we're getting a little bit of a discounted rate. I do know that Galita Union has notified us that they are ready to increase fees, and I'm told that Cold Spring is also doing a study. So there's other districts that are also interested in this. We do collect the money for our feeder districts, and then we split that money 50/50. So if somebody is building a house in the Cold Spring district, Cold Spring would get 50% of the money at their rate for half the square footage. We would get the other 50% of the money for our secondary or former secondary district at our rate. If the, if it's being built in Santa Barbara, then we would get 100% of the square footage at our rate, within our attendance area. And we also then have a breakdown between residential and commercial and self-storage that are different rates. This is a draft of the document. We bring it before you to ask for any comments, changes, or questions. And we hope that if there are none, then we would proceed with getting a final version and going through the process of doing the proper notification, bringing it back to the board, holding a hearing, having an action item for approval, and then following that, notice to the public, and the new rate would take effect. We have to, just like when we have a formal bid, you need to have a time period for two notifications and have the document available for a public inspection and send it to anybody that has requested it.
Thank you, Mr. Hetjank. Board members, any questions on this? Any language that you feel needs changing or updating? The one thing that I noticed was on page three in the description of the district. And it's just, it's really just a clarification point, because in the first paragraph, there is the discussion about how this is the former Santa Barbara Elementary and Secondary School districts and how that became combined in 2011. But then the second paragraph, one sentence, which says, "The district provides education in grades 7 through 12 for the students from the Cold Spring, Galita Union, Hope, and Montecito Union elementary districts." And I, I, you can see that's kind of oppositional to, you know, it's just a kind of a, an extra, an add-on. But I think it might be a little bit clearer to say that the district has 10 elementary schools, three elementary charter schools, and provides education in grades 7 through 12 for the students from the Cold Spring, Galita Union, et cetera.
Okay.
That was just my clarification point. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hetjank.
Thank you.
We'll see this again. H2, this is the update on transition to Common Core math. Dr. Cash?
Well, as board members are aware, we're very fortunate in Santa Barbara to have two of the most energetic, creative, intellectual teachers on special assignment in the area of math, Janet Hollister and Dr. Craig Snyder. And I know individual board members have met with them multiple times. They've made countless presentations to this body in relationship to the change to Common Core, and they're here to update on current work and importantly, the assessment process that the district recently engaged in. So Dr. Snyder?
Thanks. Thanks again. So Jan and I are going to talk about, actually, two things, but one, first of all, we're just really moving along in terms of Common Core math transition. We've spoken a couple of times. We've spoken a couple of times, good update on what's happened. So we'll first talk about the incoming 7th grade math assessment that we did give over the past month or two. With that, it was a multi-district cooperation. It was our district partnered with all of our feeder districts. It involved 6th grade teachers from Galita, Hope, Santa Barbara, Montecito, Cold Spring, and, all told, 1,355 students' tests were given and scored. So a large undertaking and something that, for this type of an assessment across all of our feeder schools, it just has not taken place. In fact, so many kids, we had to have them taking the math test overflowing. This was actually one of our after-school sessions, so you'll recognize the spaces here. So lots of kids working hard. And so I want to describe that this assessment was actually dual-purpose. One major purpose was to get a baseline assessment of where our incoming 7th graders are in terms of this math work. The math in Common Core is a different content, different level of rigor, and so we wanted to get a sense of where our Santa Barbara community's incoming 7th graders are at, at this moment. And it was also meant to be, very specifically, a teacher professional learning opportunity. So we'll talk about both of those things. So the assessment details, just so that we're all remembering, it was six items, and they ranged from grade levels 4th through 7th grade. Purpose for that was to give us this broad, sweeping understanding of what our kids are coming in with. It was nationally normed, the six items, from a pool of Common Core-aligned items, assessment items. Came with national scoring rubrics with cut scores that described grade-level proficiency, and those cut scores were, again, from a national pool, pool of samples. So it was something that was very powerful in terms of the assessment and the type of scoring we were able to do with this. These were, this is a general description of the six tasks. So again, 4th grade, a 5th grade task, two 6th grades, so two grade-level tasks, and two above-grade-level tasks. We want to get a good range of math content that would be aligned to that grade level of Common Core, and it's just a sample, obviously, of the grade-level content. And then, this looks like maybe some fancy algebraic expression, but it really describes what the scoring was like. It was a collaboration, it was a calibration opportunity, and it was, again, community-wide. So the "two" stands for two full days of teachers coming together in this room to do this level of work. And again, not just Santa Barbara Unified Teachers, but 30 teachers from across this community. 3rd grade through 8th grade teachers came together. Wasn't just 6th grade, wasn't just 7th grade, which would be great in itself, but we actually had folks from 3rd grade through 8th grade. Again, an opportunity to calibrate what is, what does it mean to be doing Common Core mathematics at the depth and the level of rigor defined in Common Core. The question mark is that every teacher, every one of those 30 scorers, received a packet of items, a folder of items, that were randomly assigned to them. So, and then the X, the multiple, means that every assessment had multiple scores for each, for each one. So no assessment was scored by one individual person or solely one individual person, and the individual scorers did not know who they were scoring. So very anonymous and very random. Here were the reactions from the teacher scorers, and this was unsolicited. They did not, we did not ask for this. People emailed or talked to us afterwards, weeks afterwards even, and this was on the professional learning side. So I really enjoyed getting together with other teachers from other schools and districts to see how they are implementing Common Core. As we move towards Common Core, I think it will be imperative that we all work together. Thank you for making this happen. A second response, unsolicited. "I really think this is the best form of professional development. If I know where my students are expected to, if I know what my students are expected to do, I can get them there." I think that's a very powerful statement. And then a very simple statement. "This was the best professional learning I've done in years." And again, this was just from groups of teachers scoring items from kids in this community. So in terms of the other purpose, the data analysis piece is, I'm going to talk about the plus enrichment. So for the Math 7+ enrichment, the, there were five items that were scored. The first item, that 4th grade item, sort of a warm-up. The 5th grade, considered below grade level, and the two 6th grade tasks, grade-level tasks. Students needed to exceed that national cut score. The 7th grade items, there was two of them, they had to meet that cut score. And we had, out of the 1,300, 1,355 test takers, 12, a little more than 12% of the test takers met those two criteria. And again, I just want to remind you, in terms of placements, this was just the assessment. So that's one of our measures. The placement into 7th grade classes is a multiple-measures approach. So we've shared this information with our junior high principals, and they will use that information to help make determination for placement into 7th grade classes. This was, again, just about plus enrichment, and we have other classes, other 7th grade classes, that we have additional data that support where kids will be placed. And so that's around the first item.
I'm going to tell you right now, I know I have questions on that, but I'm going to wait to the end.
Okay. The second thing I want to talk to you about is the teacher professional learning that has happened since, really, all year, but really honed in since January. And so the professional learning that Janet and I have been doing as a team, we are, we're two separate TOSSAs, we're elementary TOSSA, secondary TOSSA, but we have this entire year worked together as a K-12 partnership. Every single meeting, as long as it's logistically possible, physically possible, in terms of having us in the same location, it's always the two of us there. I think that's important. That's from kindergarten through our high school professional learning meetings. And so this past spring, we have had those kindergarten-through-high school meetings focused in on Units 1 and 2 of every grade level. And then we, what we did during those meetings in the springtime was we helped the team of grade-level teachers calibrate their understanding of the end-of-unit student expectations. So that's an important task, because if you, again, as that teacher pointed out, if I know where my kids are headed, I can figure out how to get them there. So we helped teachers K through high school calibrate cross-site, even within-site, their understanding of what that end-of-unit expectation of learning in the depth of Common Core and the new content of Common Core for that grade level is expected. So we helped them do that through discussion, but really through teachers doing the math that they are doing, that they are giving to their kids. It helps teachers enhance their content knowledge. Again, some of this knowledge is brand-new to them, and certainly the depth of knowledge is different than what we're used to. And then these, another major task of the springtime was to help align instructional resources to these new units. So that is taking both Common Core, or materials that have been created since Common Core, and materials that we have already adopted K through high school in this district, to try to figure out what is the best of all of these worlds to get kids to the end-of-learning expectations of Units 1 and 2. So that was a tremendous amount of work that our district kindergarten-through-high school teachers did in terms of getting the school year started off really well for next year for Units 1 and 2. For summertime, we had a summer institute in this school district. So teachers that attended continued work with Janet and I and other teachers that participated on Units 1 and 2. The next step that we went with those teachers was that we took, one unit at a time, we broke down that unit into, you might call it a unit plan or instructional timeline, so that every teacher had that expectation of what is expected from students at the end, and then they started to figure out, how am I going to get my students to get there? Breaking down those units into smaller sections or clusters. And then finally, several of our grade-level teams started the very important process of building end-of-unit Common Assessments that they would give so that we can have, on a much smaller scale, a similar type of experience that our incoming 7th grade assessment process was. So that was work that was, that occurred during that summer institute, and additional summer work will happen. So just to give you a little visual of some of this, this is the type, this, during the summer institute meeting, these were teams of teachers, it happens to be a high school team, that you can see, people are online, they're researching, they have all their materials in front of them, they're brainstorming and concept mapping up on the board. You had teams of cross-site teachers building a Common Assessment for the end of Unit 1. This is something that they are agreeing to give, once the school year starts and they finish Unit 1, to give to all three high schools, all incoming, all Math 1 students will take this assessment, will bring that data back to this same large high school team of teachers, analyze the data. Again, that's part of the learning process for teachers as well as students. Mapping, taking that unit and breaking it down into smaller clusters to create a timeline. You can see dates over here, you can see different tasks from different resources, Common Core standards boxed in the middle there. And then individual teachers, once they had that common understanding of what the unit would look like, started on individual papers that Janet and I helped them understand how this works. They would then, in their small site-based teams, create a plan that works for them. So this is just the start of the work that has occurred, and so for the upcoming school year, that work needs to continue, both in terms of revising Units 1 and 2 based off of those Common Assessments, as well as continuing that same cycle for Units 3, 4, 5, 6, and for some grade-level 7. So that's, right now, the big update, because Common Core Math in this district, it's moving, steadily moving, purposefully moving, and thoughtfully moving. So we're ready for questions.
Great. Board members, Ms. Idelson?
I know there was a lot of concern for this, between the 6th and 7th grade transition. How has that communication come together for teachers in the elementary? As the district used to do, an assessment test, and then some kids would move into, you know, the, well, geometry, if they had completed enough algebra, you know, right into 7th.
Mostly algebra, actually.
Mostly algebra, but there were a select few. How has that changed as far as the number of kids that are, in terms of their performance?
Well, in terms of, it's just a very different process. Right now, we've assessed all 6th grade from all of our feeder districts and our sites here, so which is different than the previous algebra readiness approach where select kids would attend a readiness test offering. And so it's, in terms of communication, all of our 6th grade community is pretty well-informed about this placement process and this assessment that was given. And so now, what we're working on is 7th grade, 7th grade sites communicating this process of taking this information, all this data, and making the best assessment as to which course to place them in. And so we're going to need to communicate that process, the details of that process, as that information and those decisions are made, which is ongoing. It's kind of summer work that our 7th grade principals are working on.
To add to that, we've had several meetings with counselors, assistant principals, and principals, just to go over their rationale for the placement, understanding of the Common Core, the progression of courses that our students should be expected to take through high school, so that way there's a good understanding of why we're doing what we're doing.
And there's been several parent meetings that we have hosted or been asked to present at, and so that is an opportunity for this communication and to get just any questions that parents at those meetings ask. So we're in the process of getting information out to, to a district website so that everyone can, you know, check that website, not just about this placement process, but about Common Core transition work in general.
Thank you. Dr. Paz?
So you mentioned in the beginning a presentation about the work that you've been doing with our feeder districts and the collaboration between teachers. That's something you expect to continue to do as you move forward on a regular basis or just as we move in the transition?
That's going to be an ongoing, not just in math, but in English Language Arts, Science, Social Studies. These guys were involved in it, and I popped into the room, hopefully not disturbing the work too much, often throughout the day, and the energy level in the room and the synergy that was occurring in the room was just outstanding. And to a teacher, they all said, "We want more of this, so we're going to do it."
Great. I like that idea, and I would completely support it, because I think, you know, we're looking at our community as a whole. We're just, you know, happen to be the school district that has the secondary part of our community, but we have all of the other school districts that have the other part, the other responsibility.
And the nice thing about Common Core is that we're all doing it, and so therefore we all have things to learn from one another, and so we might, and we all have new things to learn, and so we might as well do it together.
Yeah.
When we're talking about a Santa Barbara-wide community. So.
Thank you.
Going back to your slide on just the plus enrichment analysis, so about 12% of the test takers met what you have as a criteria for this particular piece as an indicator of going into plus enrichment. So that's roughly 160 students. One question I have is, was that, we have four junior highs, was that fairly balanced across the junior highs or not?
Not exactly balanced, because there could be lots of reasons for that. Certainly, one reason is that we have class sizes of those schools that are different. And so if you're, if you were to have 12% equally distributed, you're going to have a smaller amount of those students at a smaller school. But there's also other reasons why there are more, more of these students attending to attend a particular junior high. So it's not equal across.
It's not equal. What about, and I assume this assessment is also going to be part of the tool about placing in Math 7+ support, correct?
It's an additional piece of information, but that, the information of who is going to need support to be successful in a Math 7 class, we actually have that information just because students that were going to be placed in our old math sequence that was going to be at the pre-algebra A level, those are kids that, and we have that information. Counselors already got that information. Those are kids that are going to need support to be successful in a Common Core Math 7 grade level. And so this assessment will just add additional reason to show why these students need support. It's not the sole information that would determine that.
What's the current projection on the number of students that will need to be in the support class?
It's consistent with what is usually considered. For example, certain schools have four sections, so it's consistent to that.
So it's essentially consistent with, if I look at the 13, 14 data, I'm going to-
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And another question that I had, two more. One is the, you'd been working on the 7th to 8th grade transition, which has its challenges as well, and one of the questions was for the 7th grade students that are currently in algebra. What are they going to be doing in 8th grade? Are they going into geometry, since that, that pathway will continue to exist at the high school level if they choose that? Or is there a plan to put them into Math 8?
So there's been lots of discussion about that. Because of all of the changes that have occurred in terms of like the SAT and UCs have changed a lot of their, what is going to be considered A through G for new courses that they approve, a lot of folks are realizing that Common Core Math 8+ enrichment would be a good opportunity for some students who would have that choice in 8th grade. I think what our principals have decided is having geometry as an option, having Math 8+ enrichment as an option, and letting parents choose, so.
What if, because, you know, normally, there's essentially one section of geometry running at any of the junior highs. So what if you have 10 students whose parents want to be in geometry and 20 who want to go into Math 8+ enrichment? I mean, the Math 8+ enrichment, it seems like there's going to be a little bit more flexibility, because you will have, you know, other 7th grade cohorts going into that. What about that geometry class? Will we run it at that size?
I'll ask. The funding guys.
Dr. Gotti?
Yes. I think at that point, we did come, I think at that point, we decided to see where we are with that. There's options of students taking classes at the high school- high school, they would choose to do so, but I think the principals wanted to wait and see where they are. They will communicate with parents, give them the options, and then we'll wait and see where we are with that and make district-wide decisions whether we'll run it or give other options.
Okay. And my last question is on the curriculum, and you have materials now, a variety of materials that teachers can get hands-on with and that they will be using next year. And my question is really for members of the public that might want to come and take a look at this, can parents come and take a look at the curriculum? Is there a place, is there a time that they can get hands-on and really see what the differences are?
So, there will be a time and a place, the place will be here, but there'll be a time, we are in the process of building physical binders for people, teachers, and a public showing of the materials. In that process, we have a set right now for K6, the next set for seventh through high school Math One will be available relatively shortly, in the next couple of weeks. But yes, we will have physical materials for people to come and peruse through throughout the summer.
I'm wondering if we could just do a parent call-out to elementary and junior high parents in particular, just notifying them that if they are interested in taking a look at the math materials whenever they're available, you know, the hours and the location. Any other comments on this or questions? All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Lots still to do, you guys are doing a great job, thank you.
Slow and steady. Thanks.
Next up is item G, sorry, H3, and this is the update on English Language Arts Pathway Project, and we have a copy here on the dais.
Dr. Cash?
Dr. Dadi.
Dr. Dadi?
I'd like to invite Mr. Dovis Zennius, the English Language Arts TOSA, to come and give the presentation.
And accompanying me will be Dr. Tim Dewar from UCSB. Just before I begin, I wanted to let you know that the packet you have, the packet that you have is only one-sided, and it was intended to be two-sided, and unfortunately, we just discovered that half of those slides that we have for you are not in your packet. So, I'm sorry that that's happened.
But I assume that this will all be attached to the agenda online, to Nova's Agenda, so we can get that later. Okay, thank you.
Right, you will. Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and mirror mine, if that's okay. I wanted to give a little bit of context first, before we went through this presentation. We've been working in English Language Arts, in ELA, over the last two years, in our transition, or preparation and transition to the Common Core. A major feature that we've all discovered here as a district-wide PLC of the Common Core is the, is the writing component. Now, in the Common Core, there are three main categories. They have narrative writing, they have what they call as explanatory writing, and they have at the end, argument writing. And of those three categories, it's the argument writing that is the most strongly featured. And so, we, we've had a look at that, and we've been doing work in the face of those demands. But I'd like to add also, as a sixteen-year veteran teaching English Language Arts, that during my journey as being a teacher, the teaching of writing bubbles up as perhaps, I would argue, the most demanding piece of being an English teacher. It's really difficult to do, it's incredibly important, but it's very, very tough to do. One of the things I think about as a professional is that it's one thing to say you teach writing, and another to actually do it. And it's, it's demanding, and it's tough, and it's tough to do well. So, given, and a lot of our teachers share these sentiments, we've had these professional conversations over the last two years, and then when we have the Common Core call-out these demands on us, what we have is, is a landscape, I'd say. And given this landscape that secondary ELA is, how challenging it is to teach writing and the demands of the Common Core, well, right in that emerges, right, and thanks to the foresight of our superintendent, Dr. Cash, an opportunity to support English teachers in our district in their teaching of literacy in the Common Core with a focus on academic writing. And that opportunity is called the I3 Pathway Project in ELA, and this is essentially, it's a partnership between us as Santa Barbara Unified School District and the South Coast Writing Project at UCSB. So, what is it? It's, it's a professional development and research effort that's funded by the United States Department of Education and the Investment in Innovation Grant, thus the I3. And this Innovation Grant is focused on improving the academic reading and writing of secondary students, especially English learners. Okay? So, let's take a look at that PD, what is it? This PD focuses on, or professional development focuses on cognitive strategies approach to reading and writing. Now, as this was bubbling up, for me personally, and speaking to my colleagues and being mindful of their needs and the demands on them, I was always, I'm just mindful of, wait a minute, is this going to be another new thing? The new glitzy, amazing, solve-all-our-problems type of thing, and I was wary of it. And when I began to dig deeper and take a closer look at this, what, what I really like about it is how it aligns with the work we've been doing in professional development in ELA and literacy over the last, I would say, three or four years, okay? The model that we're using, cognitive strategies approach, and the research we're using, isn't necessarily new, it's been around and embedded for quite a while, but what was concerned is I don't want our teachers to go, throw out all the old and here's a new thing. No, this, we're approaching it as, this isn't the new thing, it's merely another tool in your belt to take on the challenges that we face in our classrooms, to help kids build their literacy level and take on the challenges of the Common Core. Okay? So, it is consistent. Now, teachers, given this professional development, will learn how to teach students to use the powerful thinking tools, which are the cognitive strategies, for meaning-making. Now, these include things like tapping prior knowledge, goal-setting, summarizing, and monitoring meaning. And these are, let's put it this way, let's say, us in this room are very good readers and we're very good writers, and these are the type of skills that come to us very quickly and naturally. But for students with emerging literacy levels, we need to make explicit the moves that good readers and writers make. And so, this is explicit teaching to write now, and this, when you're facing this text or this writing task, this is when we recommend you set a goal, or summarize at that moment, or monitor your meaning, these type of things. And they'll all come in an orderly fashion and be presented in orderly fashion, so that teacher can, teachers can reinforce these moves. And then students will begin to see, okay, these are the things that good readers and writers do, and then through practice, we'll internalize them. So, this professional development follows best-practice standards, okay? It's sustained. Our ELA teachers who are participating in this will have 46 hours per year for two years, and they'll have a combination, these 46 hours are a combination of full days, around six, and then after-school days, about five, okay? And this is, these are job-embedded PD, this is job-embedded PD, it is voluntary for teachers in our district to participate in this. And these teachers, once they sign up and commit, will be stipended, and their, their sub-costs will be covered. I'll give it to Tim to discuss the research.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Dr. Cash, thank you for bringing us in and working with us on the Pathway Project, I'm so thrilled to be here tonight. I want to talk a little bit about the research, so that you recognize that we are both providing professional development and doing research on the professional development, that's a requirement of the I3 grant, that's what we are funded for, is to make sure that the professional development we're doing actually has the positive effect that has been seen in other places when this has been done. The content of this professional development has been developed over a number of years by the UCI Writing Project, the Writing Project at University of California, Irvine, and the director there, Carol Booth Olson, one of my colleagues, and we've been working together for about the last 15 years, I've been watching her develop this. She did some of this early pilot and work with the Santa Ana Unified School District, had great results. The grant allows us to try to replicate those results at a number of districts, a number of partnerships with Writing Project sites. The research is quasi-experimental, we will have a group of teachers who will be receiving the professional development, and a matched set of teachers who are not receiving the professional development, for two years. Those teachers who do not receive it in the first two years will receive it in Years Three and Four. The research is only on the first two years. The split into program and control will be, program and control teachers will be random, of course, it's quasi-experimental, and we've been out recruiting teachers to voluntarily participate. Among the data that we will collect will be pre- and post-writing sample scores. These are text-based samples of writing mimicking the Common Core assessment, though not on a computer interface, they are pen-and-paper tests at this point. This earlier research found, had some really great outcomes, and I'll just highlight a few of the things. We saw improvements at the Santa Ana Unified School District on a number of measures. Most impressively for me are the Casey, High School Exit Exam test results, so you can see overall statewide average, what happened at others, for other students in Santa Ana, and then what happened for the Pathway students. These were students who are in the classrooms of teachers who received the professional development. So, not, so we see some very great outcome, really positive outcomes, at the high school level for students who've been in the Pathway Project, even as little as one year, but many of these students overall had been in Pathway classrooms for a number of years.
Can I just interject before this slide goes away? When you say overall Santa Ana Unified School District pass rate, does that include the number that's below it, in terms of those Pathway students as well?
No, it's not, no, that's not...
So, they were separated out?
Right, so that the 40% is not brought up by the 71% who passed.
Exactly, and can you, what was the number of students, or do you have an idea of...
I don't have the N on this one, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
I can, I can find it, and there's a, on the next slide, I believe, for more information, you can see Carol and Bob, Dr. Olson and Dr. Lann's article for the...
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Colleagues, yeah. So, now that we see it on the exit exam, so the statewide kind of test, we also saw it on our own internal pre- and post-test. The change in scores from pre- and post for Pathway students went from about the 50th percentile of achievement to the 75th in a year, so September to May. They followed these students, a number of these students went to the local JC in Santa Ana, Santa Ana Community College. The students who had been in the Pathway were more likely to persist in college. So, we're seeing an impact on this work, not just kind of immediate statewide tests, but overall writing ability and the kind of, what we might think of more dispositional things, like persistence and grit, that these students are able to do better and persist in college. The bottom bullet there is the reference for the article that talks specifically about the work in Santa Ana. Carol has also, in the midst of doing another round of work with Anaheim Unified School District, some of that work's been published. So, the bottom line of the research is Carol's, the UCI project, the work was so good that the write-up of that was accepted by the Federal Department of What Works Clearinghouse, meeting the gold standard. In other words, this is the research that indicates what works. So, we were, she was encouraged to reapply, to go for a validation study. Of the seven validation studies that were granted, were funded last year, this was the only one in literacy. I think in particular because of its emphasis on, and impact on English language learners. I want to talk a little bit about who's involved in this, so you know who the players are. You can think at the Pathway level, at the I3 level, grant level, there's really three players. There's a consortium of four Writing Project sites, and their four partner districts. So, you've got the South Coast Writing Project at UCSB working with you, and you can see the other districts that are working with the other Writing Project sites. We also have the National Writing Project Network, who are in charge of the writing assessment. And I can talk at length about that, but I won't for now. And then, as a requirement of the grant, we have an external evaluator, and that's SRI International. They're making sure that we don't fudge any data, that the implementation is, has fidelity across all four sites. The South Coast Writing Project, acronymed as ScriP, no T sound, just so you know, ScriP. We are a professional development network that works with teachers, K-University, across all subject areas, and we care passionately about improving the teaching of writing for our students and improving the teaching conditions for all of us. It started in, we just started yesterday, our 36th Summer Institute, which is a four-week think-tank, it's one of our key, about writing, it's one of our key components. There are 190 sites across the country, there's 17 across the state of California, all of them are university-based, with leadership both at the university level and in public schools. And it's also part of the whole California Subject Matter Project Network. We will be developing and delivering the PD in consortium with the three other Writing Project sites. And more particularly, who locally is that? That's me, I'm the director. And we're also pulling in as part of our leadership team for this project, Amy McMillan, who's an English Language Arts teacher and nationally board-certified teacher at Galita Valley High School, Galita Valley Junior High, my apologies, Greg Rainey, who's a department chair in the English Department down at Ventura High, and Nicole Schoen, who's a longtime Writing Project fellow, who'll be mostly handing over our logistics. And, it's not just the three or the four of us, it's all the Writing Project teachers who we've worked with over the 36 years, and so that's about 500 teachers, who all have been doing variations on this work for the last years. And now, I'll turn it back up, yeah, this is yours, that's yours.
And so, to sum up, what we have here is, it's a professional development opportunity for our teachers, that uses the cognitive strategies approach to accelerate the analytical reading and writing abilities of mainstream English learners, and to help them prepare for on-demand writing assignments, to succeed in core academic subjects, meet the Common Core State Standards, prepare for college and career, and then to, to close that insidious achievement gap. So, that's what we have. Any questions, welcome.
I want to thank the four board members asked questions, both Tim and Dovis, for their undying devotion to a very most important skill in strategy, writing. And some of your 500 teachers that attended ScriP, they've even became superintendents.
I've heard that, I've heard that. Didn't hold them back at all.
Or they, yes, something like that.
They also turned into math toses.
That's right, yes, that's right.
Dr. Paz?
Some are actually wives of school board members, or continuing their association with the South Coast Writing Project. So, is, I just have a really quick question in terms of, so the lead for, for the I3 grant, the application, was UCI?
Right, they're, they are the holding university, and then we have a subcontract off of their grant.
Okay.
At UC Santa Barbara.
And so, just as a estimate, how many students are going to be involved in terms of the research study in itself?
Overall, we have capacity to deliver the PD to 240 teachers, so that'd be 60 secondary ELA teachers within the district. So, maybe the math toses can help me out, we calculated that it'll be about 115,000 students who will be affected by this, so one-fourth of 115,000, that's just under 30-some-thousand, so, roughly.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Timon?
Well, I think that the results for, or the preliminary results for Santa Ana look promising, and so I'm actually just interested to see how we do and how this looks for our district, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. I know, since I work at UCSB, I already had at least one of the teachers send me a message saying, "I have lunch from 12:00 to 1:00, would love to connect," because the teacher is part of the ScriP program this summer, so, yeah, looking forward to hearing more.
Dr. Paz?
Another question, in terms of, how often are we going to get some, you know, continuing feedback information at the board level, what are you thinking right now?
Well, at the, at the pleasure of the board, I will come to report, we would expect, we will have first-year data to give to the teachers on the pre- and post-tests next June, and so certainly we could provide a summary of that to you next June, by the end of the school year.
That would be great, look forward to that.
Mr. Aaron?
I'm just curious...
Mr. Heron.
I'm just curious, what is the process? What's the cost to the district? Is it part of our LCAP plan?
It's not part of LCAP, and there is no cost to the district.
Thank you.
Actually, yes, thank you, Dr. Droudi. Our teachers are actually going to be paid to participate.
Thanks to federal funding.
Yeah.
Right, right, right. So that covered, the sub-costs, et cetera, that will come out of the grant.
Great, excellent. And I'll say that my library boss is a Scrip graduate as well, so just comes all over the place.
It's getting creepy, isn't it? In a good way.
I think what everybody else would really look forward, hoping that it does, you know, it's, it's making such a difference with our, just professional development for our teachers in general. I can't imagine that we won't have that kind of success, but I'm really curious to see it and really hopeful because obviously, as we had pointed out, this is hard work and, and we, we see what a struggle it is for our students. So this could make a huge difference for them. Thank you.
Thank you for talking.
All right, last, on our conference agenda, H4, this is the discussion of the 2014-15 Santa Barbara Unified School District High School Information Book and Course Catalog.
Well, I'm going to hand it right off to Dr. Droudi.
Thank you. The Santa Barbara Unified School District High School Information Book and Course Catalog was first distributed in 2012-13 to the three comprehensive high schools. Prior to that, the course catalog was done in an individual, school-by-school basis. That catalog has been updated with current information. Now, the purpose of the catalog of approved high school courses is to assist families in selecting the courses that are best for their student. Selecting one's course for one's high school program is extremely important and an extremely important task. The catalog will help one answer the following questions. What courses are required for graduation? When will one, when will one take each required course? What are one's interests and areas in which one wishes to develop? What courses are best suited to one's goals? So that's what we try to address with the course catalog. With that, I'll leave it up to questions.
Thank you. It's looking pretty dramatically different in this updated version. So board members, comments or questions? Come on, Ms. Idelson.
As we all know, I was very involved. So lots of kudos to Dr. Droudi and Carrie Martin for hard work on this. And I went through many levels of corrections, and, and I appreciate that many of those were put in. And I think so important that the guide for parents, students, and, you know, when you look at this now, it basically explains each course in detail accurately, and, you know, how it meets A to G, what area of A to G it meets. There's still a lot of work to be done, as Dr. Droudi pointed out in one of our discussions, how, you know, now things show. And I mean, one example, I think, that is interesting to me is when you look at the area of art, which would be page 57, and I know some of these things have evolved over time, but on page 57, you have ceramics 1 comma 2. And I don't see reason for the 1 comma 2. Similarly, color and design, 1 comma 2. And it's not really showing that it's broken into separate semesters. So things like this, when you go to then the UC Office of the President A to G list for each of these schools, and you look at the course list for our district schools, and you see ceramics 1 comma 2, and then you look at a school, say, anywhere else in the state, when they're teaching it, they don't have 1 comma 2. And, you know, just questions such as that, I think, having this all done accurately to meet our district, now we can go through and say, what is A to G approved, what isn't? You know, if one school is, you know, I think this, this is very good.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate all the work.
Well, I appreciate Mrs. Idelson's assistance with this, coming from an outside district, not from here, understanding that three different high schools that have different programs. And us bringing the high schools together as a unified system was, was pretty difficult, so we needed a perspective of, of parents who have gone through the system and witnessed the confusion, so that really did help us out.
Right. Well, and the, it is not simple. I mean, I think, you know, so often in our district, parents will ask myself and my husband, should we go hire a college advisor to, you know, I mean, they are, they are very confused.
Yes.
So I think with this, there's a lot more clarity. And having the academies explained and the career technical education, it's, it's coming together very nicely. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Heron.
Procedurally, does this come back to us, or is this just for-
Conference item, just for your information.
I'd like to get a copy of it.
A printed copy?
A printed copy.
Sure.
I didn't get to it till this morning because it was last on the agenda, and then 121 pages almost was impossible to, to do, so I'd like to get a hard copy.
When would you like to pick it up?
Tomorrow.
Or the next day?
We'll have it for you tomorrow.
Dr. Potts.
In, in developing this, was there a discussion about finding ways to continue to update this and make sure that it happens?
Yep, like Mrs. Idelson recognized, there's, there's still a work in progress. The key component here is being able to pull the head counselors and assistant principals together to really look at line by line, and then also anticipate what parents may think and when they look at their information, and really keep their ideas in. So we, we got a lot more work to do. So our hope is that we start this process as soon as August, school kicks off in August, and we, so hopefully next year, we'll be able to show more of a, a cleaner, even cleaner version.
And another question in terms of that too, is that I, you know, I, I look at this as, as a Bible, sort of speak, of families who don't always know, don't have the level of experience of having a number of children, as Ms. Idelson has had that opportunity to help her children progress in their education. But for some families, they don't have that. So this is going to be a Bible for them.
Absolutely.
Is, was there a discussion, or has there been discussion about trying to get this out to families, or at least make them, making them aware that this is available at an earlier point in time?
Yes. We have budgeted to be able to make several copies, hard copies, to distribute at the, at the high schools. But this is always going to be online as well. So there, there'll be copies in each site.
And our, our goal remains to have it translated into Spanish as well, so.
Yeah.
We want to get to a spot where we felt we were within the 90th percentile of accuracy. And then once there, then we would translate it, and then, then as we continue to refine it, it would be much easier to, to translate those refinements.
I would, you know, I would, you know, strongly encourage, suggest that this goes out to our district ELAC committees, especially at the elementary level. You know, parents need to know and prepare at an earlier point in time. I think, speaking for myself, this would have been great to have when I was in junior high, knowing I didn't have a family background that necessarily gave me the opportunity to understand what I needed to take at a certain point in time, nor did I have parents who had any clue whatsoever. So I think the earlier we, we have an opportunity to get this out to folks, so they begin to think about it, it would be really great, and I think extremely beneficial for a lot of families to understand that, that the planning doesn't begin at high school, planning doesn't even begin at-
Yes.
-junior high, it begins at elementary school.
Yeah. And there's still some learning that has to take place, even with our junior high counselors, as they talk about students' placement, that they're thinking long-term, not just the two years at the junior high. And this, this will go far in helping them out.
And I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done, also Ms. Idelson, for your work.
Ms. Timon.
So another kudos for all the work. I think this has been a year and a half in progress. It has taken a long time, a lot of human power, so thank you all for, that have been involved in this process. I just want clarification, the updating piece, so this will be updated annually?
Yes.
Okay. And the process begins in August, to pass something by the, I'm just trying to think of the timeline.
Yes, based, based on this year's experience, we want to start in August. This, this current year, we, we started, we stopped, but I need, I need a better timeline to make sure that I have standing meetings with the counselors, assistant principals, too. And then the goal then will be to be finished by, say, January, so that our parents have information as they, as we start building the master schedules.
Great. And I'm guessing that this will be located online?
Yes.
Yeah, it is currently.
Okay. I think at one point, I tried to look for it, it was a little while back, and I had a hard time finding it, and so I just want to make sure that it's in an easy place to get to. And what's the timeline for thinking about this in Spanish? Will we see it in this academic year?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you'll see it before the start of the school year.
Okay, great. And the last piece, I think, pigging back on what's been said, is I know that now with this new position we just approved tonight, the English Language Coordinator slash Parent Coordinator, I know in the way that we've talked about doing trainings for EDU and all the other programs we use, this would actually be a great resource to bring into some of those trainings because the wealth of information is pretty extensive. So any district programs that we have that could also use some of our in-house tools, I think, would also make all of these hours and emails and meetings that have taken place even more worthwhile because it'll be used in different ways. So thank you for doing that.
Ms. Idelson?
Yeah, I just have one more thing to say. Like, if you go to page 94, I just want to say, what's to me very special about this is you can compare courses that are A to G approved appropriately, and then those that are not. And I, I don't want to point fingers, but I just want to say, okay, if you look at Chicano Studies at San Marcos, that's a course that could be A to G approved, and, you know, and-
Yes.
-Dr. Droudi, you know that. And I think as a district, it's an obligation to our students that we do that.
Yes.
And there's, you know, a timeline for that happening. And having this done correctly is great because, because now we can look at it, we can say, there's a deficit here.
Absolutely.
You know, as a service to our stakeholders, we need to correct that. Similarly, not as bad, but on page 92, marine biology, on the right of the page, page 92, so go up, has, as long as I've had children in the high school district, been represented in, well, pretty much incorrectly here, it's listed as an elective, when it should be Area D of science. And you go on to, again, the UC Office of the President website to look at high schools, and there is nowhere, anywhere else, is marine biology in Area G, except at Santa Barbara High. So these are things, you came into this. I'm not, like I say, I'm not blaming you or anything, but I'm just saying, let's get it right.
Absolutely. But this, this, by having this on the same page, actually allows us to now see what's, see the hole, so now we can act on-
Exactly. We, we see where the problems are. And, and I know submitting and redoing this is, is a challenge, but it, it's time to get it right. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The only thing that I would add is obviously that I, I really do feel that teachers have an obligation to participate in this process, and they have an obligation to look at this catalog and make sure that all of their courses are in it. Because I can see that one of my student's teachers, his course is not in here. And they really need to look. And I, and I put that down at the teacher level because I think sometimes they blow off things like this, and-
That's why Chicano Studies is not UC-approved.
And they, there needs to be ownership and expectation there to make sure that they're in, that they're incorrectly, and that if they can be UC-approved, that that, that is done so, and that teachers participate in that process.
We'll support them in that endeavor.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Again, tremendous amount of work and obviously a constant work in progress. And I'm sure that you'll have members of the public that are going to weigh in now that, that it's going to be, you know, available, and just as long as there's a process and that people understand that it's just a continuous-
Yeah.
-change cycle on this. Great. Any other comments on it? All right, moving forward. Thank you so much. That brings us to item I. We do not have any consented items to return to for discussion. J, coming events. Any coming events that people need to talk about right now? No?
Just the next four, maybe.
Just the next, well, let's go to future agenda items. Mr. Heron.
I noticed, we had noticed that there might be a workshop on special education sometimes later this year. And I would like to suggest a couple items. I would like to know more about the mandatory disability awareness days, the history, the And I've been told that Jennifer Griffin does a great job on that, and I'd like maybe to have her make a short presentation.
Jennifer Griffin?
Jennifer Griffin. The other is, I mentioned earlier, assistive technology, future goals. I'd like to have some rundown of what we hope to accomplish in the future relating to assistive technology.
All right. We do have our next regular board meeting on July 8th, one regular meeting in the month of July, but we have a special meeting on July 22nd at 3:00 PM. And I guess we could talk more about what that's going to entail when we meet on July the 8th. If there's no objection, then I am going to adjourn the meeting.